Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So this evening, my esteemed colleague, Mr. Jefferson, is going to chair the meeting. So I will hand it over to him. Thank you. Okay, I will start with the announcements. This Friday, December 8th, the Hanukkah Committee of Grafton and the Universal Unitarian Society of Grafton, in association with Grafton Recreation and Beth Tivka Synagogue, are hosting Love and Light, a Hanukkah celebration. Celebration will begin at 6:30 PM on the Grafton Common and will include blessings, music, food, and the menorah lighting. Everyone is welcome to attend. They also asked me to pass along invites to the full Select Board and the Town Administrator staff. The Grafton Public Library will be collecting food, pet food, the entire month of December in honor of their friend and frequent library visitor, Toto the tornado kitten. Drop off your donation before December 16th for holiday distribution. The Grafton Food Bank especially needs dry cat food and wet dog food. Pet toys are also welcome. The Select Board and the Town Administrator are looking for interested residents to fill vacancies on the following boards and committees: the Agricultural Commission, Cable TV Oversight Commission Committee, Council on Aging, Grafton Cultural Council, Historic District Commission, Historical Commission, Veterans Advisory Committee, and Waste Reduction Recycling Committee. Please apply with our online portal or email a letter of interest to taoffice@grafton-ma.gov. On Wednesday, January 24th, the Economic Development Commission will host a networking event for business owners at the Post Office Pub from 5 to 8 PM. So we don't have any public hearings tonight. We don't have any Select Board appointments. We do have a recommission appointment from the Town Administrator.
Go ahead.
Yes, please.
I move that the Board vote to affirm, sorry, the appointment of Amy Smith to the Recreation Commission.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion passes. We have the chief in for the appointment of an auxiliary firefighter.
Good evening.
Just Chief.
Looking for affirmation for the appointment of Rebecca Hagerty as an auxiliary firefighter assigned to Station 2.
I move the Board vote to affirm the appointment of Rebecca Hagerty as an auxiliary firefighter at Station 2.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. And on to our first item of new slash continued business, a general update from Fire Chief Matthew.
So this update is going to be quicker than the last one. So just things have been going on in the last few months. Apparatus wise, we had a new Brush 1 delivered, off-road vehicle. Some of you may have seen pictures online and stuff. We're still waiting on equipment for it and getting it registered and stuff. And then once it's in service, we'll kind of bring it out to everybody, show it off.
Pick us up for a ride.
Sure. We're still waiting on delivery of the new Engine 1, which has been postponed numerous times due to COVID and other delays. That's projected to be delivered in March of 24. And in anticipation for the replacement of our tower ladder, we're establishing a committee to start a design and build for that. That process could take up to a year. And then once we sign a contract for a truck, it could take up to three years to build. So we're trying to get a head start on that so we don't get behind on apparatus replacements. Where, as Rebecca was appointed tonight, we've had four new people join the department in the last few months. So the recruitment has actually been going pretty good. A few of them actually noted that the lawn signs that we put up were actually piqued their interest and they came in on for that. Our SOG Committee is still working on putting out our next line of SOGs. Hopefully that will be soon. And as a general update, we are up to 650 calls for service as of today, this calendar year. Last year, we ended up, for the whole year, just shy of 600 runs. So we've been a little busier and stuff, but all in all, our participation numbers are up too. Our number of people per calls and answering the calls and stuff has gone up. So it's good to see. And we do all the fun stuff, like Grafton celebrates the holidays. We had a good time. And Santa got a ride in the ladder truck up to the common this year again. So that was awesome. But that's my quick, short update for now. Everybody have any questions?
Just a quick one. So yeah, it seems like recruitment's been going great.
Yeah.
It's really encouraging. And you mentioned that we're getting better participation. Can you just talk a little bit more about participation of getting sort of newly appointed, you know, call firefighters showing up on the regular? How's that going?
Yeah, it's been going very well. They're excited to join. Once they figure out the process and stuff, I think there was a lot of negativity around having to go to the academy and stuff over the years. And I think now that we've had a few people go through it, you know, that are younger, they're actually saying, hey, not that big of a deal, you know? Goes over, finishes pretty quick. And the junior members are helping the other junior members out. You know, if somebody's having trouble at the academy, they're picking up the phone and saying, hey, come on up, you know, we'll do some training at the station and review whatever you have in trouble with to help them through it. So it's become quite a, quite a network of the younger and even the experienced people helping out. But I'll say the biggest thing that makes me feel good is the other day when I announced Rebecca's appointment, I put out a letter or email to everybody and everybody, a bunch of people jump on the email welcoming the new person. Everything from welcome to the team. And the one that made me smile was a couple of people saying, welcome to the family. So it's, it's been a great thing to watch this, you know, over the last year blossom to something that people are considering each other family and, you know, really helping each other out. So I think that plays a lot into people showing up more and things like that. So it's been, it's been great.
That's great.
Awesome here.
And I think it speaks to the fact that you're working at all levels, right? So you're building out that command structure, putting people in, you know, positions to do some mentoring, you know, training and, and, you know, kind of guidance for some of the younger members and then filling in underneath with, with new members, you know? So that's, it's great to see that it's coming together.
Yeah.
Great work.
Any other questions?
I have a question. Just because you mentioned the tower ladder, what is the height that our tower can service?
It reaches up to 95 feet.
And will the new one be similar or?
Yeah.
Okay.
All good?
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks for coming in, Chief.
Thanks for having me.
Thanks, Chief.
Make the next one longer.
Okay, so our next discussion is to consider mending the Cable Oversight Committee membership. Mr. Hassinger's here. Do you want to kick off the discussion on this one?
Me?
Yeah.
Yep. Well, you may have seen, I tried to send some mail. But we have a situation that brings us to a point where we might be able to deal with a couple of things that have been kind of going along for a long time. We had another resignation. You know that the current strength of the committee is seven nominally, but we're down now with the last resignation to just four, which means that all four have to show up to do business. We only found out about that. Fortunately, the four did come to our last meeting. But this is a chance to look back. For many, many years, the committee was, like most others, a five-member committee. There was a point somewhere along the way where, for whatever reason, the Board increased the membership to seven. But we haven't been seeing that much demand for positions on the committee lately. And so first suggestion is, right now, where you only have the four members, you're less than five, you can change the membership back to five without it having any detrimental impact. The other is that for reasons before even my time, a Board of Selectmen, when they created the committee, decided to make all the terms one year. So that means that, like, I've been, I think I'm on my 40th swearing in to the committee. That's, this might be a good time since we're talking about the subject, to make the membership of the Cable TV Oversight Committee like practically all the others, rotating three years or whatever. So anyway, I thought it was a good, good chance to, circumstances kind of needed, and it's a good chance to pick up a couple of things that have been there for a long, long time.
Okay. Anybody on the Board wish to ask questions or kick off the discussion?
Sure, just a quick question. Bob, I read your, your notes, and I think I agree with you. I don't, if there's always been, if there's been a recent call in the last handful of years for seven, yet there's only been six, five seems fine to me and staggered terms totally makes sense to me. Is there some sort of a downside to that, to having a Board of five and stagger the terms? Because I don't, I couldn't think of it.
No. Most of, most of the growth of cable access was while we had five. It very, we did very fine. I think everybody else does fine with five membership. If there was an overwhelming demand and some benefit, then, okay, we can, it's easier to increase the number than it is to decrease the number. This is, this is a particular point in time when we can do that.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Just a couple of questions. Bob, have you floated the idea behind other members of the committee?
Yeah, yes, we, it wasn't on the agenda because we didn't know about the resignation. But we did talk about it and find that there was consensus about the discussion about the five members. And I've, I've let them know about the, my, my thought that came to me afterwards about the one-year terms. And no one, no one's had any objection.
Okay. I guess what I would be interested in doing maybe is drafting a new charge and sending it along to you guys to discuss and just give us any concerns or feedback once it's drafted before we move forward with making a change. If that makes sense.
I'm not quite, you want to change the charge? It's pretty, you know, it's been good for a long, long time.
I think we'd have to change the charge in order to change the membership, wouldn't we?
Yeah. So Bob, the, the charge typically also conveys the amount of members as well as the staggering term piece. So we can, we can certainly update or create. I don't know if I've ever seen the Cable Committee charge.
Me neither.
I didn't find it on the website.
So I'm not proposing we would change any of the responsibilities or anything like, it just would really be the mechanism to officially change the, the length of the terms as well as the, the membership. And we, typically, there's, you know, different constituents represented. So there might be somebody from GCT TV that's prescribed to be on the committee as well as some members at large, maybe a, so I don't, I just, I would want to look at that.
There isn't any designation. We've had a staff person, actually, one of our members became a staff person and continued to be on the committee, Bob Dotoma. He was a committee member long before. And the other current staff member was a committee member until he had to move out of town. And now he can't, he can't be a member anymore. But, you know, Bob stepped down here, you know, just very recently. I'm, I'm just a little, little concerned. We'll be having a meeting soon and we'll be against the, you know, the four out of seven issue. Do it, you know, we'll do it wherever you want, but.
Well, I don't think we can actually just change it without actually having the, the charge in hand to describe what the change is. I think the, the way to do this is to update the charge because that's, that's what established the committee in the first place and probably was updated from five to seven when a previous Board made that decision.
Actually, I don't know that there's ever been a charge. There's a page about the committee that explains. I don't know that it's formally a charge, but it's been consistent for a long, long time.
Okay. Then I guess if, if there is no existing charge, I guess I would.
Well, I don't, you know, I don't think they did a form, I didn't, I don't think there was a formal charge process in 83, 84.
Okay.
But, you know, what's on the website is what it is.
Okay. So then, I guess, my recommendation is that we create a charge in line with every other Board and Committee in town. And grab what's on the website, which describes your sort of responsibilities and just define it as a five-member, you know, member-at-large committee should be fine. We can get through that pretty quickly.
Glad to hear. Is this something that we would, just confirming kind of the order of operations here, we would suggest that Cable Oversight has their next meeting, draft the charge based on the current language on the website, update the membership numbers, and then we can put them on our January agenda to address? Or is it something the TA should provide some assistance from?
So it's like, if I could weigh in, I think we can probably create a charge pretty quick. We already have the template. Most of the information's already on the website of what they do. Mostly cut and paste at this point. Get this over to them, you know, maybe by the end of the week. So at their next meeting, I don't know that you folks need to see the charge beforehand. If there's minor revisions, we can make them at the time that you're discussing the reduction to five. But we can certainly put that together pretty, pretty darn quick, just to not, not belabor it for Cable Committee.
Yeah. The, the, the meeting, the next meeting of the committee is scheduled for the 18th.
Oh, yeah, we got, we got, we'll be well ahead of that. We'll be well ahead of that, Bob. You'll have it on Friday.
Okay, but.
So we won't be able to solve the quorum issue before?
Okay, okay. You don't have to have another, you don't have to have another Select Board meeting to get it done.
Right. If, I mean, I think the Board, this is just my opinion, but you can trust us to write a generic charge that's going to do what they're already doing. And then if the Cable Committee agrees as a group that, yes, we should be fully requesting a drop to five and this charge looks fine, then we come back in January and you can have a bite at the apple then. But it will get rid of that problem of you meet in January to review the charge to then send to them to then come back to you. I mean, it, it seems like it's a pretty benign charge, to be honest.
Do you need a motion to that effect, or you could just go ahead and do that?
I'm, I'm perfectly comfortable just going ahead and doing that. So Bob, we'll send you a draft charge on Friday or by Friday.
Yep. And we'll hope we have four people can act on it on the 18th.
Yep.
Correct.
You want action?
Right.
Okay. Well, we'll do that. We'll hope for the best.
It's all we can do, Bob.
The four we have are pretty reliable.
Good. Sounds good. Well, thanks so much for coming in.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob. Enjoy your night.
You too.
Thanks.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Letter of support for the Grafton Water District.
Yeah, so I, I had already reached out to Matt beforehand and he had seen the letter that I had drafted. And so sent it over to him again. And basically, the first stab was certainly adequate. And he agreed that we could just go ahead and send that to Representative Meridian and Senator Moore relatively promptly. And then when and if something else, if they're, they're sending a packet in, we can potentially include something in that in the future. But this would be adequate at this point.
Any other thoughts or questions?
All right. So I did, but it's probably not that big of a deal. Just the one sentence that says, encourage our legislators to advocate for funding mechanisms to assist water districts such as ours. And right in my head, I said, in particular Grafton, which is not written. It doesn't, it's a really small point because there's a lot of Grafton listed in here. But it was, when I read it, like I said, that's what I heard in my head. So if it was not too hard and people agreed, folks agreed, I would write, including or in particular Grafton, and then just continue the sentence.
Could we just say such as Grafton?
Such as Grafton, yeah.
That's what I just wrote.
Or Grafton, yeah.
Okay.
Something that calls to it. But that was this small piece that popped in my head.
The only other question I had is this was an EPA thing, was do we want to consider sending this to a Congressman as well?
Yeah, there's no problem with that. Yep.
Yeah, I think just send it wide.
Fire him off. Okay. If everybody's okay with the amendment, we can take a motion.
So I move the Board vote to authorize the Chair to sign and send the letter of support for the Grafton Water District regarding PFAS regulation with one change paragraph for such as Grafton instead of such as ours to Representative Meridian, Senator Moore, and our Congressman.
Second.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passes. Easy. On to annual license renewals. Thank you for handling that, Ms. Phil.
Sure.
So typically, Mr. Chair, you would ask if anyone has any questions? And then if not, you could just take a motion and do them all in, in one batch. And if you have questions, we can.
Take them on eaches.
Anybody have any questions they would like to ask?
I asked my question earlier. I'm all set.
You're allowed to have more than one question on the night.
Oh, I thought it was one.
Don't tell him that. I've got him down pat. He only gets one question.
My text to friend is just one.
I just did a quick, like, I think this came up last year, just like, say, Buggy Whip, for example. I don't believe that they are operational anymore. Does this just kind of keep carrying over?
Will they have to reapply?
Yeah.
So as long as they're reapplying?
So they've reapplied, is what this is saying?
Correct.
Yep.
All right.
Got a nice, long motion for you.
Which is what?
Is on page?
14.
Can't be as long as the one from the other night.
No, it's not public hearing. It's not average either.
So I move the Board vote to approve the 2024 annual licenses as per the attached list for the following common victular garage licenses, class two and three, music, in, holder, and pool table. And I move the Board vote to approve the 2024 annual liquor licenses as per the attached list for the following: restaurant, all alcohol beverages, restaurant, wine and malt beverages, package store, all alcoholic beverages, package store, wine and malt beverages, in holders, all alcoholic beverages, club, all alcoholic beverages. Licenses which require a 110 and 304 inspection are contingent upon final improvement, approval from the fire department and the building department. No liquor license will be issued without an approved certificate of inspection.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Excellent. Motion passes. We are on to, discuss potential message board locations.
Is this from Ray?
Uh, no, it was, we discussed the location not being viable, and then it was to be brought back at a future time. So we just put it in as a placeholder, but I do know that Ray had some thoughts on that. So the Board may want to consider passing over till you have full membership.
Any objections?
I'd recommend that. And also, I know Ray was interested in potentially doing some fundraising for it. So that would be something that I would be interested in discussing as well. So I suggest we pick that up in January.
Okay. Adding on to that, when I last saw Dave Meridian, he said there might also be some additional funding that he could get us from the state for this. So good discussions, Jeff.
Absolutely. And I mean, if I can chime in, this was kind of something I brought to all of us, that the location, I think, is the first thing that we want to think about. And if, you know, people are looking at 122 and adding something down there, just me personally would prefer to see it kind of up here as opposed to down there where there's already so many lights and, and whatnot. But that's just a, you know.
We can't do it anyway.
Location, sorry?
No, not, not at that intersection, but there's been other ideas bandied around that are, you know, say closer to Stop and Shop, to Dunkin' Donuts area.
That's all.
Okay. William has a couple of policies for us to review.
Yes. Okay, so the first one up is the Americans with Disabilities Act grievance procedure. This one was a fairly straightforward rewrite. We put it in the common format that we've been using. We also included all of the information for the coordinator for the building in a more easily accessible position. It used to be in an attachment to the previous policy. This puts it right in there so that way anybody who's looking for it can find it easily. And then beyond that, it is compliant with the current statutes that we need to comply with. And that's about it.
Very good. Any questions or comments? Do we want to take a motion?
Sure. I move the Board vote to approve and sign the Americans with Disabilities Act grievance procedure as presented.
Second. Motion made and seconded. All those in, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to CDL drug, driver, drug, and alcohol testing.
Yes. So this one had some more substantial changes. We worked on streamlining it. There were some redundancies in the original policy. We cleaned up the citations. So the 49 CFR Part 382 was still the accurate federal regulation. However, there were some really nitty-gritty citations in there that were no longer accurate. So we updated that. Similar to the road opening policy, I don't know if you remember when we did that a couple of months back. This is one that would probably behoove us to take a look at every two or three years just because it is so closely tied to a federal regulation. The only call out I would have is on the very last page where we talk about follow-up testing. There is one typo. It says preceding where it should say following. And I would just ask that in any motion to approve this, we make a call out that we need to amend that.
Very good.
So the .04 limit comes right from the regulation?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Are all these federal guidelines, or do we have some, uh, discretion on inputting, for example, the violations, which is a question I have?
So I didn't float this by Paul Canoyer down at Highway, uh, to make sure it was still adequate to what we're doing. Uh, Paul had no feedback on it, so, uh, if there is some discretion, Paul is comfortable with keeping in line with the federal regulation.
So just one quick question, Mr. Chair, if I may ask you. Um, there's a, for the violation, for first offense, if you, alcohol, first offense is one week unpaid suspension. Second offense is termination. For drugs, the first offense is two weeks unpaid suspension and the second offense is termination. I guess my question would be what would be the difference? Why would there be a one-week suspension and, or a two-week suspension? Impairment is impairment.
As, as I understand it, um, the drug impairment, it, I think it revolves around our testing program and when you can come back in and retest. Um, I believe that's why there's a difference between one week and two weeks. I personally would be comfortable with alcohol being a two-week suspension. You know, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I don't, uh, I, in my experience, the first offense triggers other things that then, you know, it takes us two weeks to get through anyways. You know, honestly. So the only, the only caveat to that is, um, if we make that change today, it is potentially bargainable, uh, under our GMEA contract, which is where most of the CDL drivers are employed. Um, so just to keep that in mind, if we want to make that tweak, which is perfectly, I think it's reasonable, um, we would make that tweak. I would then bring it back to the union, we discuss, and then I could bring it back for final approval, if that's the direction the board wants to go.
It's a thought, up to the others what they think.
This is what's already in the policy, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so if you delayed, there's really no impact because this is what our current policy is. So just to put that out there, it's not like it's, we don't have a policy and we have to scramble to make sure that this works.
Or everybody else's thoughts?
I agree with that. I'm, I'd be in favor of pushing it out, particularly if, if the paperwork and what, the other, all the other things that occur end up taking that amount of time anyway. Um, it should trigger the same response to your point, Mark.
Yeah, I don't really have a strong opinion about it. Good. So why don't we, why don't we do that?
We can do that. Yep, sure. Uh, I would also fathom a guess that when this po- policy was originally written, alcohol and drugs were viewed as very different than they are in today's.
Legal versus not, yeah.
You know, so just a thought I had while we were discussing it. No impact either way. So, yeah, we will bring that back to, we'll bring that over to GMEA and see, see where we get to, and then we can bring that back.
Okay, um, select board reports.
So, uh, Grafton celebrates the holidays was this past weekend. Uh, just throw out a thank you to all the volunteers and local businesses. Um, Adam, Cody and Mary at Rec and Darrell and our park staff who worked their butt off for weeks and, including the day of to, um, kick that event off. Grafton Police, Grafton Fire. Uh, Bob and Bill over at GCTV for always making the studio accessible to the committee. Uh, and everyone else who participated that day. I know we all, um, hit up various stops. Uh, the other one, I'd also like to, uh, throw out another huge thank you to the Metro West, uh, Building Officials Association for sponsoring the Thanksgiving dinner for our area seniors. And in particular, Bob Berger and Lisa Kelly, who are both instrumental in organizing and, and running the event. Uh, the Metro West Building Officials Association had members who traveled from all over to volunteer, along with a host of local volunteers, like senior center staff. Uh, some local officials like Dave Meridian, myself, uh, Ms. Roy was there. Um, uh, local company J and J Electric volunteered their time. It was, it was a great turnout. Uh, we all heard so many nice compliments and heartfelt thanks from the seniors who attended. Um, you know, and, and it was, it was the surrounding towns as well. It wasn't just Grafton residents. Um, they were treated to turkey stuffing, all the trimmings, dessert, a saxophone quartet during dinner, a Rat Pack performer, uh, after the meal. There were take-home dinners and desserts, gift bags from, uh, Kate Toomey, the registrar, registrar of deeds. Um, as we were talking about it beforehand, Bob Berger was adamant that it be more than just a dinner, but a memory. And they, they definitely succeeded in that. It was just a, a lovely event and something that I hope uh, we can, we can find a sponsor for next year as well in the event, uh, Metro West decides they, you know, want to host it in a different town. It was, it was something that was just deeply appreciated by the people who attended, so, um, thank you to everybody involved.
Uh, TA report.
Yeah, thank you for covering those. I did not put them in there because I assumed that you were going to cover both of them. Um, okay, so, uh, again, as we've discussed every meeting, some of these are, they're just placeholders so that when changes happen, we report them out accurately. Um, this will be our last South Grafton Community House update. That painting project is complete. Uh, it looks fantastic, um, really, uh, if you haven't looked at it before it was painted, I think it looks like it did, which is exactly what it's supposed to look like. But having spent so much time there and seen how pu- uh, in, in poor shape that building was, uh, it really came out great. We're, we're ecstatic with it. Um, so if you get a chance to just pull in the lot there and, and take a peek, it, it is, it, it juiced it up quite a bit, so that's good. Um, Grafton Public Library, um, so the update for the cupola is we have to rebid that process. Um, we, we, uh, we have to rebid it, so. The, the, uh, the state got, got us notice about our bid process after we had, uh, posted it and were about to award it, that they didn't approve it ahead of time, so now we have to re, redo it, so. Uh, so we are doing that, right? That's accurate. Okay. Um, and then the only other update I have on the project stuff is Regional Emergency Communications Center. We had a meeting with the state last week where we were given the full green light to move forward with a project manager and architect search. So we are gonna start, I, I hope we are gonna start seeing some progress, you know, pretty soon in the new year. That, that's, that's great because that's been our biggest holdup is what can we do and when, and it not being, uh, a hundred percent clear, so. That's great.
Sorry, was it project manager and, and what?
Uh, architect.
Architect, awesome.
Yeah. So other updates, you know, it's really, uh, heavy in the budget season for us. We're talking budget pretty much every day. So our forecasting, the process for that is about ninety-five percent. Um, there are some things in our current five-year forecast that we want to just make sure that we, we polish, uh, and then we'll push that out to the board and FinCom early in January, um, which is consistent with how we've been, we've been doing that. Uh, capital planning, uh, all of our capital items are submitted. Uh, we will be meeting hopefully with CIPC folks in early December. Um, we, we are still, uh, working with the schools to get their capital side, uh, entered into our system and then, you know, we'll really build that out. But it is looking, uh, pretty good, so. Um, the budget book, um, I haven't really done anything, honestly, since the last time we met. Um, I got the initial layout and now it's kind of get all the numbers and then go back to the budget book. And then our operation, operational budget, our first submissions are due twelve-twenty-one. Um, we have met with a number of department heads, so as far as submissions go, we're actually probably two-thirds complete, actually, uh, well ahead of where we need to be. Uh, and that process seems to be going really well. The department heads have really acclimated to clear GOV and the way that that process works, so I think that that's, uh, that's just a, a good win for us. Um, I'm gonna leave seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street on here because I've been dealing, uh, with that project quite a bit. Um, so we met last week with the developer and their capital folks. Um, we are working through some issues that are tied to, uh, contamination. It is a DPW garage. It was for, you know, fifty years and so unsurprisingly, there are, are some, some contaminants in the soil. So we are working our way through that and, uh, trying to wrap that up as quickly as possible because they're, um, really close to being ready to submit to conservation, which is their first step in their permitting process. Um, and then lastly, library flood update. So Will's been at the library pretty close to every day. Um, you know, it's been a long road, but the walls are now complete. Um, the last piece is carpet. And, um, we are hopeful to get that in in the next probably two weeks.
Uh, for the community room, yes. The children's room, since it's such a bright, vibrant pattern, we've got to do a carpet match and that's gonna take a little bit longer.
So what may happen carpet match-wise? So it's a different run because they bought all the carpet in one run. So the, the, um, coloring might be off and then that would predicate us having to do the whole room. So we are working on that. But the community room being vacant makes that a lot easier for us. Children's room would be a bigger process, so. Uh, thank you for all your work on that. It's, uh.
My pleasure.
It's always something. So, and that's pretty much all I have, unless anyone has any specific questions or things that they saw.
Yeah, I just have a question on, so the Milbury Street, um, did you end up talking to Paul?
I did. Yes, thank you for that. So, um, Paul and I spoke last week on the issue. Uh, he has been talking to residents. He is also sending out, um, another update as well as, uh, clarification of, uh, the, the easement process and the payment process and all of that. Um, and then he would be coming back before you folks, it looks like it would be the January twenty-third meeting. Um, so we could do a couple of things. We could either, you know, residents are welcome to come to that meeting. Um, and he felt that there was a pretty good handle with him reaching out to residents on the street on a as-needed basis and didn't feel that it quite hit the threshold that like a George Hill would, where we had to, you know, it was a really complex set of plans, um. So our thinking is just to refer everyone back through Paul Canoyer. Um, and then, of course, if they don't have satisfaction, they would just come back to us, as opposed to holding a, uh, like an info session.
I think what we talked was like a mailer of some sort.
Yep, exactly. So, and, and that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. He is, he's already doing that as part of the process.
Okay.
So, uh, you know, it's not a big lift for us to just use your frequently asked questions, which unfortunately, most of the answers to frequently asked questions are it's a federal project and those are their guidelines, so if you want the federal money, you have to do what they've asked you to do. Uh, unfortunately, that's, that's kind of the answer that nobody wants to hear, but it, it, it just kind of is, is how it is. Um, but yes, we can, we can bolster that and do that all in one shot.
And question on the carpet, is that the children's room, is that under insurance? That's carpet?
Yes. Correct.
Even if we have to do the whole kit and caboodle?
Yep, yep. Yep, and insurance is aware that that is a possibility. So, I mean, obviously, we're I know there was some conversation about pattern and color and all of that when we were opening it. Um, you know, as far as timeline goes, it's obviously best if it's, you know, eight squares of carpet as opposed to the whole room, because that's gonna, you know, we've, we've, it, it feels like a very long time that the room's been closed. There's, it, it's, it's a, and it has been, but it's a process that just takes what it takes. Line up the contractors and get in their schedule and they come when they're, and they're available, so. Yeah, that's pretty much all I, oh, oh, no, sorry. We were in the question phase. I already said that part. That's pretty much all I have.
Mark asked his one, so.
One, one other thing, I just want to also, uh, congratulate Rec on their, um, their, uh, decoration of the common. I think it looks great. Got a ton of feedback from people. Um, just that they absolutely love it and, uh, so congratulations and thanks to them for for, uh, making all of that happen and, uh, you know, I think we have a common to rival the other commons now. That's what I hear most. Ours doesn't look like Westboro or, you know, stuff like that. So we're, we're in good shape. I'm happy with it.
So even with the rain, there were people, stood lines of people taking pictures, you know, at the, at the bandstand. Uh, there's a, a big freestanding star that they were next to. It was, you know, people were definitely appreciating it. And like you said, we've seen a lot of, a lot of feedback online, um, loving the changes, so, yeah, it's, it's pretty great.
Okay, um, correspondence. If they have anything they want to talk about. If not, we can move to resignations.
I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Philip Grasso from the Master Plan Working Group.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, just keep going. I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Sean McAvay from the Cable Oversight Committee.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I move the, aye. Sorry. I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Hemat Pasala from the Master Plan Working Group.
Second.
Made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
And I move the board vote to acknowledge and accept the resignation of Eliza Shara from the Council of Aging, on aging, sorry.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, anybody in the audience wish to participate in public discussion? Anybody else?
No one on team.
Okay, uh, meeting minutes.
I move the board vote to approve the meeting minutes for October twenty-fourth, November seventh, and November twenty-first of twenty-twenty-three as written.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Any discussion? Uh, hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, um, we will now do a roll call vote to move into executive session. Uh, per general law, uh, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A two to conduct strategy, strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. Uh, we will only return to adjourn.
I move the board vote to enter executive session.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Uh, all those by roll call vote. Mr. Alamo?
Alamo, aye.
Boffin, aye.
Jefferson, aye?
Fully, aye.
Okay, we are now in executive session.